Thank you very much. Calling the City of Wilsonville Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, June 9th to order, it is 6:02. Please do the roll call.
Excuse me. Chair Cameron Mesbaw.
Here.
Erin Woods.
Here.
Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Ron Heberlein.
Here.
Jerry McGreenfield.
Here.
Brianne Tzitsinski.
Here.
Olive Gallagher. Thank you.
We're assuming Commissioner Gallagher will join us a little later. I assume staff haven't heard that she can't make it tonight.
No, we are anticipating Olive showing up in the meeting, yes.
Excellent. Very good. We will now all stand and staff will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, which stands on one nation, under God, and the physical of liberty and justice. Get my ears back. Very good. Citizen input. Do we have any citizens in the hall?
No.
Very good. Then I will read this citizen input statement. Greetings, Commissioner Gallagher. This is a time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. We don't have any public hearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience either here in City Hall or via Zoom would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now. Do we have any takers?
No, sir. There are no takers, sir. Go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you. I had radio silence there for a while. The administrative matter on the agenda coming next is the consideration of May 12, 2021 Planning Commission minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, comments, changes? Commissioners, raise your hand if you have any. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Therefore, it is approved as submitted. Next item on the agenda is the annual housing report. Am I correct? And then in that case, I will ask Ms. Bateshaw to introduce the item and the staff that's reporting on it.
Thank you, Chairman Fies. Commissioners, good evening. This is typically a favorite topic for presentation on the planning session. We know that each year is interesting to kind of look back and see what housing was developed in the prior year, as well as what was approved and or to understand kind of what activity we will see involvement on the ground in the upcoming couple of years. As you know, we have kind of a big housing work program as we speak. You have another agenda this evening talking about middle housing. We are actively growing, still building out Villouois and in Frog Pond West. And soon we'll be undertaking the Frog Pond East and South master planning. And when that concludes, we'll actually be looking at doing our next housing needs analysis. The last one we did was adopted in 2013. It was that housing needs analysis that recommended that as a city, we actually track our annual growth. Our annual growth was faster housing at the time that exceeded growth expectations of the region. And it was helpful for us to understand that growth, particularly in comparison to available land. As you know, in Oregon, we are required to look at our housing needs in relationship to our 20-year land supply. And so because it was going to be close in terms of us being able to have sufficient land supply, it was recommended for us to look at housing activity. Over the years, we found that there's a lot more information that is very valuable for us to be tracking in that process and not just the characteristics of our development in housing and how much lands that might be used in our supply, but looking at other things like affordability and long-term growth initiatives and whether that housing need is matching with the growing population of our city. So as we look forward, this is a really interesting year. I think a really interesting snapshot that Georgia McAllister is going to walk us through. I'm interested in this one as it's related to the past few years, the growth that we've tracked, but also looking forward as we start growing in these other neighborhoods and as we look to do our next housing needs analysis in about a year and a half from now and what stage that will set for our next growth initiatives and recommendations and policies, particularly as the city has adopted an actual housing strategic plan. So we know you've been in the middle of all of this, all of these discussions, particularly thinking long term. So for the next 20, 30 minutes, you get to sit back and hear kind of what the most recent activities have been and what the trends are. And we are welcome all of your comments as usual and your various due questions. So with that, I will hand it over to Georgia McAllister, Assistant Planner, and she'll walk you through the 2020 Annual Housing Report.
Hi. Thanks, Miranda, for the introduction. As Miranda mentioned, I'm Georgia McAllister, the Assistant Planner with the City of Wilsonville. And I'm going to share my screen now so we can look at the housing report together. Is everyone able to see the screen? Yep. Okay. Right. So this is the 2020 Wilsonville Annual Housing Report. Just... To get started, I wanted to reflect on a quote about the importance of housing keep us in mind throughout the presentation. This is a quote from Matthew Desmond, a housing rights advocate. "Housing is absolutely essential to human flourishing. Without stable shelter, it all falls apart." So what's going to be in this report? We are looking at characteristics of housing units permitted for construction. We're also going to look at affordability trends and more information about our households within Wilsonville. Here's just a greater breakdown of the sections of this report. So 2020, we permitted 84 homes for construction with no apartment-type homes, but we did permit 14 of what we would consider middle housing that included fiveplexes and fourplexes. We also had an ADU built in 2020. There was one development plan that was approved in 2020 for the 71-unit Frog Pond Ridge application. This is consistent with the housing we've seen over, or the production we've seen over the years. We had a peak in 2016, which was when Villouois was really at the height of construction. Over the last few years, we've seen some of that development slow as our neighborhoods are filling out. We're watching a transition from Villouois to Frog Pond. And here, you can really see that peak in construction as it tapers off over the years. So our growth has also slowed a little bit in 2020, opposed to the previous years that only 0.8% growth, as well, that's our growth in housing units. And then our population growth has slowed as well with only 1.1% of growth. This is the second lowest rate of growth in the last decade. You can see here that there's been a steady rise in housing units as well as a steady rise in the population, but with the population rising a little more quickly than the housing units themselves. And this gives us a really good look at this. So this is the percent of growth over the years. And there was, we're seeing that housing growth was starting a little bit more before the population growth and reflecting pretty well throughout the years, with a bit of a peak in population 2018 setting out again 2019 to 2020. We're going to talk about everyone's favorite subject now because middle housing is going to be increasingly shaping what Wilsonville looks like. And starting off this section, I have a quote from our mayor, Julie Fitzgerald. "It is important to the City of Wilsonville that our community is well-planned. At the forefront of that planning is middle housing and equitable housing, as set forth in the City Council's unanimously adopted Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. When we focus on how to implement more affordable housing and a variety of housing types, we are addressing major challenges affecting the region and the city, including a housing cost, household changes, and exclusion. By planning to include more housing types, I believe that Wilsonville will build community and economic vitality." So what is middle housing? Middle housing is a term that really just refers to multi-unit or clustered housing types that are comparable in scale with single-family homes in neighborhoods. It's more diverse housing than the typical detached single-family home. It's become a lot more used phrase in the last few years, especially since the 2019 House Bill 2001. This was passed at the state, which creates, is asking cities to create more opportunities for middle housing and think about that in the forefront of our plan. for middle housing and think about that in the forefront of our planning. And why is this a focus? Well, affordability and availability have been a challenge across the region for many years, and we'll look at that more later into our report. There's also been changes in household demographics and lifestyle, especially after this previous year with the pandemic. We're still in it, but we're seeing more multi-generational families and different types of living. Middle housing not only addresses affordability and availability, it addresses different lifestyles, different family types, and just creates more opportunities for different types of ownerships within the city at a variety of price points. Currently, middle, there's actually a lot of middle housing in Wilsonville, something we're talking about as a new concept, or we're talking about a lot more than we used to, but Sharpe No, one of our first neighborhoods, actually has some of the most concentrated middle housing in the town. And so up here, I have just a few examples of where we can already see middle housing in Wilsonville. The triplex in Villalobos, condominiums at the Village at Main, and a new duplex in the Frog Pond neighborhood. You can see there's a lot of different variety in this one category of housing, so a lot of different types. So what does this mean for Wilsonville's future development? Really, we've already always been focused on trying to create neighborhoods that have a variety of housing and that meet a lot of different needs. Household 2001 is going to, the biggest changes will really be flexible lot size, allowing duplexes of any single-family lot, and the opportunity for non-traditional development. However, our master-planned communities that are still under construction will not be impacted significantly. Our biggest opportunity for implementing the changes in Household 2001 and really focusing on middle housing will be when we master-plan Frog Pond East and South, which is upcoming. This was already planned to have a greater variety of housing units and density than Frog Pond West. And now we have the guidelines from Household 2001 to really get creative with and see what we can create in terms of middle housing. So we're going to have more single-family oriented, larger-scale neighborhood here with more middle housing neighborhood options. So here is a summary with a map of what our permitted homes looks like over the years with our average net density at 9.3 and the net acres permitted, nine acres. You can click on the symbols here that each represent one home for a little bit more information about that home itself. To break it down even further, so out of the 84 permits that we permitted houses that we had this year, 50% of those were in Frog Pond, so that again emphasizes our switch from Villalobos over to Frog Pond. An interesting development we had was our first cottage cluster-like development for Avenue Commons in Old Town. We have a lot of variety in the homes, so our smallest home, or our smallest lot this year was just under 900 square feet, and our largest was just over 13,000 square feet. Home size ranged quite significantly as well, with our smallest at 600, that was the ADU, and then our largest at 5,359 square feet. Again, we can take a look at now the permits throughout 2014 to 2020, get a little bit more information on them. This includes the subdivision, developer, size of the home. This page is focused on future development and the approval, the approved plans. The orange home represents Frog Pond Ridge. If you click on that, you just get a little bit more information about the development, including that it is planned to have 63 detached, single-family housing units and eight attached units. You click this hyperlink when you're in the report later, it'll take you to the project page so you can get even more information. This map is just meant to show what construction has looked like and what areas have had the heaviest level of construction. The light areas show areas of high construction with the blue less intense. We see that Villalobos has really been concentrated over here for years, and now there's more of that heavy development in Frog Pond. The next section, we're going to talk about affordability trends as well as more information about our households. So I'm going to kick it off with a quote from Chris Namster, our Community Development Director. "This past year, the Community Development Department staff's focus has been on planning for a wide variety of housing types to meet the needs of citizens at all phases of their life while at the same time complying with state mandates. It's really all about providing people with diverse choices in housing locations, style, and price points. When thoughtfully approached, the outcomes can be tremendous." So what does it cost to own a home in Wilsonville? We've seen a 3.6% rise in the cost of an average home since this past year, which is about $480,000 for a household that's earning the median income in Wilsonville. That is significantly more than what would be considered an affordable home. We did a calculation on what would be affordable based on a 20% down payment, the interest rate of the previous year, 30-year fixed rate, and not paying more than 30% of your household income into your mortgage. That would be about $413,000. The average home in Wilsonville costs 16% more than that. This graphic here illustrates the difference between affordable homes and the actual value of homes across the years, and this gap has been widening since 2013, got a little bit closer together in the last year, but really we see a disparity there. We break it down even further by mortgage payments. The monthly mortgage payment, if you're buying a home at the median price with, and you earn the median income, would be 40% of your monthly income, so that's 10% more than what would be considered affordable. Pretty consistent with previous years. It's a little bit improved from last year, but not by much. There's a couple of factors that go into this, obviously home value and household income. We wanted to break that down a little bit because we're seeing that both income and the cost or the price of a home is going up. Between 2013 and 2020, we saw an increase of income by, or increase in home cost by $161,000, while income only increased by about $16,000. So it was about a 50% increase in median home value and only 28% increase in median income. So we are still seeing this steadily rising income, but not nearly at the rate that would correlate with the rise in home value. We can see that again when we look at percent change, income only increased by 2%, while home value increased by 11%. And this can be contributed to a few different causes. It could either be that Wilsonville residents are earning more money, or the income could be rising because we are getting more households with higher income moving into the new homes in Wilsonville. It'd be great to get an assessment of that that requires quite a bit more analysis. So looking at cost of renting a home, the first numbers we're going to look at come from the American Community Survey estimates. And this survey is really general, doesn't account for a lot of the market factors, and also includes subsidized apartments. So when we look at this, broken down by what would be the affordable median rent for a resident of Wilsonville, it'd be about $1,398. And the estimate of what a median rent price in Wilsonville is according to the American Community Survey is $1,360. So looking at this, you would think that it's pretty affordable for a renter in Wilsonville to have a home or an apartment. And so this is a great resource, but in previous years, we had been using Zillow Market estimates to get a better understanding of the actual market, market cost and market value at the time. It takes into account much more, many more factors than the American Community Survey does, including monthly fluctuations. Unfortunately, in 2020, they stopped providing this information, so we are working with a consultant to get more updated data. We're going to look at the 2019 numbers again here because it really illustrates the disparity between income or affordability and actual cost. The Zillow Market estimates broke it down by all rental units and then multifamily rental units. So the affordable median rent in 2019 would have been $1,430 a month, and both the median price for multifamily and the median price for all homes are significantly higher than We can also take a look at what the median income in Wilsonville looks like, not just over the years for renters, but also how renter income compares to house, or homeowner income. So we saw in 20, between 2019 and 2020, the median income for renters actually fell, which is the opposite of what happened with homeowners, where they had an increase in income. The homeowner income is 54% higher than the median income for renters in Wilsonville, which is really, really a significant gap there. And some things just to think about would be, could someone who's renting in Wilsonville feasibly afford a home here? So according to the most recent Zillow Market estimates that are available, a multifamily unit would be 27% more than what's affordable. Here, we can take a look at that, just a visual representation of the affordable median rent. The blue line is multifamily and green is all homes. Another way to look at this, we would check out cost burden, so the percent of monthly income being spent. If we look at households earning $20,000 a year or less, 90% of those homes are rent burdened. If we look at home, households owning $50,000 or less a year, still 70% of those households are cost burdened, this 30%. So even though, according to the American Community Survey, it's affordable, the reality is really presenting something different. Break down what our housing units look like, not just by whether or not they're detached, but looking at the bedrooms inside compared to what our households look like in Wilsonville now. We can see that we're actually having an increase of homes being built with four bedrooms or more over the last few years. It's pretty significant, but we're not seeing larger families necessarily in Wilsonville. It's interesting to see that could be related to the increase in income. Again, that's not something we can really tell from the information that we have, but we do see that overall, the majority of homes are two to three bedrooms, and the majority of families are households in Wilsonville, all between two- to three-person households. So in general, the housing stock breakdown is right here. We have about 45% of our housing are apartment-style, 41% single-family detached, another 7% of single-family attached housing, 5% condominiums, and the rest is broken down between cottage style, duplexes, as well as ADUs. And we're hoping, this is what we're hoping to see, really grow in variety as we implement Household 2001 and as middle housing becomes more common in the city development. So we had a lot of information about Wilsonville, which is really great for our own analysis, but it's good to look at it zoomed out, see how we compare to our cohorts in the metro. So here we have comparative median home sale price. You can see that even though we're looking at it, Wilsonville seemed really high, it fits right in with our cohorts, says a lot about our region and how costly it really is to live here, but also shows that Wilsonville's not unique in this struggle right now. We also looked at rent burden compared to our cohorts. In 2019, Wilsonville had the lowest rate of rent burden. This last year, we actually changed so that we are now the second lowest rate of rent burden, and that could either be a factor of the cost of rental units increasing or just the fact that, as we saw earlier, median income for renters decreased between 2019 and 2020. Wilsonville still has a significant number of people that are rent burdened, but not quite. It's at 46%, which is really high, almost 50% of renters, but not quite as high as 12 and Tigerd. So as a response to the housing crisis in 2018, the city or the state began collecting information on severe rent burden. So rent burden represents if you have to pay more than 30% of your income every month into housing. Severe rent burden would be if you're paying 50% or more of your income towards housing. We can see here that, once again, Wilsonville has the second lowest rate of severely rent burdened residents, so it's still 21% of our residents paying more than 50% of their income in rent. So we compare growth with our cohorts. Wilsonville was really ahead of the curve for a while, with really significant growth in 2015 and 2018, seeing a little bit of a decline now, but overall, pretty consistent with our cohorts. As well with our housing units, you see some giant peaks in between 2016, 2018, with a little bit of slow development now in 2020. So this is, and we just wanted to make a note here, that negative growth could have to do with housing stock removal for blighted properties or redevelopment. Want to look at the metro housing growth forecast, which Miranda referred to earlier as really what sparked a lot of this analysis. So at this time, we've built about 44% of the households that were projected, still a little bit ahead of the curve for what they were expecting between 2014 and 2034. We've seen a slowdown in the past few years. I'm not sure if that's going to be enough to really change that we're still expected to overproduce. As far as buildable land goes, we've now built on 52% of the available land in Wilsonville for the next 20 years. It is worth noting, though, that there is an additional acreage that was added as part of the UGB expansion. So when we factor in that, it's 26.7% of the land inventoried has been approved for Looking forward, the big challenges that we have are housing affordability and availability. It's a challenge across the region, adapting to new lifestyles and different types of households. Since 2015, the city of Wilsonville's population has increased by 16%. We're one of the most rapid-growing cities in our region, and with our limited land available, we really have to work on a development shift to accommodate the changing markets, as we're doing, with the focus on middle housing and equitable housing. So it just, again, reflecting on the fact that homeowner income increased, but the median income for renters decreased, says a lot that potentially we have people who can move into Wilsonville and come into the community that way, but it may be difficult for already-existing residents who rent homes to buy a home within our community. One of Calico's goals in 2015 was to complete the equitable housing study and develop affordable housing strategies. We've been working towards that goal with consistent steps with the strategic, the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, Household 2001, as well as an upcoming transportation-oriented development and the master planning of Frog Pond East and South with the focus on middle housing. All these goals have provided, the goals of these provide, combined efforts is to meet the needs and changing demands of the community and help slow the increasing gap between housing costs and affordability in Wilsonville. So when this report was released last year, we were a few months into the COVID-19 pandemic. A lot was still unknown, still a lot is not known, but we included some information on that. We wanted to do an update this year. At the time that it was published, it was June of 2020. We had not really even seen some of the most devastating days of the crisis, but we were seeing changes throughout the state and country, attempting to slow the spread of the virus, which included limiting traffic to non-essential businesses, social distancing, and mask requirements. We really had no idea how the pandemic was going to affect development in the city of Wilsonville and construction in the city, but we still don't know entirely how the housing market and population growth are going to be affected, and we're still in the pandemic and emerging from it right now. What we do know is in 2020, the city remained open and operating the whole time. Our development and construction continued at a really steady pace despite all of the challenges. We remained committed to supporting our small businesses with the small business grant relief as well as outdoor dining options, communicating with the developers and residents using Let's Talk and Zoom, and really just kept things going. And many of the fears we had coming into 2020 or moving through 2020 didn't really actualize. In 2021, we're expecting to see even more of the continued steady development in Frog Pond, seeing the final neighborhoods in Villalobos be completed, hoping to enable more efforts for a variety of housing options, continue putting that at the forefront of the work that we do. And Wilsonville remains the resilient community with a thoughtful, forward-looking approach to growth and sustainability, which will enable us to weather the storm and look to a bright future together. a bright future together. Thank you. Now, with whatever time that we have left, I'd love to take questions.
Questions or comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, I have a comment. You know, one of the key takeaways for me was the affordability piece. We've seen that there's been an increase in residents coming in, and I would expect as the years go forward, we'll see more residents who will not be making, or may not be making the kind of salaries that they can fully afford, certainly at today's prices. So I'm wondering, in everything that the city is looking at, and of course, some of the things we'll be saddled with, the affordability piece, to me, is a major issue, and how we will address that with these builders who will be building homes in Frog Pond East and South. Because if we looked at the charts and looked at the trends, it's certainly looking, in my mind, that it's not going to get any better. So I'm just wondering, how will we look at addressing this? And, you know, when we look at the individuals who we expect to be moving into these middle housing, how will we address that, particularly from the affordability standpoint? So I'm not sure who wants to answer that. Maybe that's you, Polly.
It could be Dan, Polly. I'm also happy to start and talk a little bit about that. I think first and foremost, we will use that equal housing strategic plan as a guide. I mean, I think staff will be looking to planning missions, city council, and thinking, how do we implement the strategies within that to help us move the needle on affordability? There's specific actions in there about looking for projects, partnering with nonprofits to identify specific construction projects for additional affordable housing. And then there's also strategies in there about looking for funding, looking for tax abatements, to be able to incentivize more affordable housing, and then diversifying the housing stock. So I think we're really going to try to look creatively about how we do that, particularly as we enter Frog Pond East and South planning. We'll be looking at different housing types, but also trying to build partnerships through the project with folks who might be interested in developing in East and South, and not just from the for-profit side, but looking at nonprofit partners who might be interested in development. We'll be having conversations about how to increase affordability, and actually, the team, there are members of the team in the virtual room who might want to add, but there will be analyses on affordability, on increased opportunities for accessory dwelling units, looking at how we finance infrastructure with system development charges, and whether we want to look potentially at variable rates for system development charges related to size of homes or size of lots. That's all to be researched, assessed during those projects. So given the situation, I mean, it's, as Georgia has outlined in the housing report, it's not a great outlook. It's been a crisis we've been struggling with at the region and state level for some time now, and it's not getting any better. And it's going to take a multi-pronged approach and effort, and it's going to need to be at the forefront of kind of multiple different actions that we take. And so we are hoping to do that as we move through the next big planning efforts we have. And then, as I noted before, in 2023, we need to do the next housing needs analysis, which will kind of take a step back. It'll look at the last one we did, it'll look at what's changed in that timeframe in terms of our growth and policies we've adopted. A couple of the big things would be related to Frog Pond. When we did that in 2013, we didn't have the area plan or the master plan. We didn't have that land in the urban growth boundary. Those were key recommendations, but so was revisioning the town center and increasing the ability for housing opportunities in town center, and taking actions on affordable housing. And in that time, we've also adopted the equal housing strategic plan. So we've done a lot in the last decade related to those recommendations, but we'll need to take a look again because everything, so much has changed in that time. So we need to do another housing needs analysis, and as a part of that, the state now also requires we do a housing production strategy. So it's similar to some of the recommendations that we had last time, but it's more specific to how do we, as a city, actually influence the production in a way to meet the need? And I would say that it's similar to that equal housing strategic plan, but it probably takes an additional step. And so that's something that we will be doing side by side with the housing needs analysis in the 2023, 2024 timeframe, which really will try to pull all this together and then set the next stage for us in terms of action, in trying to really continue work on these issues and hopefully move the needle in the right direction.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a, I realize, it's a tough nut to crack, and as you said, we have to pull out all the stops, so I just wanted to mention that because in reading the report, it was quite eye-opening, but I'm glad to hear the things that you said, Miranda. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I was trying to go back through and scroll through the annual housing report. First off, Grant John, it's great to see this data again. This is one of the things that I look forward to every year, to see the data and all of this, so thank you for that. Do we know what the average home, the number of people in each home on average is and how that has changed over time? Are we seeing more people per residence, or is it stable?
I think, wait, let me pull up. I have, I have the breakdown by number of people in the household, and it has changed some since 2016, but not really that significantly. We're seeing a few somewhat smaller-sized homes and an increase a little in one-person-sized households, but it has stayed fairly consistent over the years.
All right. You know, and one thing, from an observation standpoint, you know, one of the things, you know, bouncing off the pressure woods, is looking at the median home sale price and where we are versus through our peers. You know, it really, this is a regional issue, this is a statewide issue, more so than it is just a Wilsonville issue. What are we seeing at the state and regional levels that will have an impact on this? I know that middle housing and HB 2001 is an attempt to help, but I'm not sure how much it's really going to help. And are we seeing other things coming down the pipeline that might actually make a bigger difference?
I would say that the next biggest difference, so as you noted, there were significant policy changes at the state level, which will trickle down through metro and impact every city in the state, which is good, so that kind of all cities are working on this issue, at least in terms of housing diversity. The next biggest piece, I would say, would be the metro bond, the metro housing bond. So time eludes me. It's probably been three or four years ago that the region passed the housing bond. It will collect millions of dollars, I'd have to remember and look at how much, with different targets around affordability. And those targets were both in terms of targets for different kind of median household income as well as housing size, so ensuring that we're also building units that a certain percentage of those units are really for family-sized units, because a lot of times we end up with affordable housing projects that are just studios or one bedrooms because that's more affordable to build. And so that housing bond specifically had targets for family-sized units as well. That money gets distributed through the counties and through community development block grant recipients. So for Wilsonville, to see money essentially, or projects that benefit from the metro bond, it would go through the Clackamas County allocation and the targets that the county has based on those regional targets. They had one, they're going to have two rounds of application for that grant. One has already passed. A lot of the projects that were funded were projects that were already in the loop through the housing authority or nonprofits, but then were able to secure funding for projects that they had gaps in funding for. The next application round is next year, and staff is looking at potential opportunities to potentially bring a project to Wilsonville.
Miranda?
I would also note that the state, the legislature, this session was talking also about funding for affordable housing projects. I'm not sure the status of that and whether that is a bill to come and what the level of funding would be, but I believe that the state is also talking about it in terms of real money for real projects.
Was that it, Commissioner Everline?
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we can move on. Thank you, Georgia. The graphics of the housing report is becoming more and more refined. It's really nice to see it develop, mature, and communicate clearly and better. These are all good progress towards making the functioning of the city transparent for the average citizen who wants to look it up online and figure out what's going on. Our next item, continuing under the informational, is the city council action minutes. We usually deal with, used to deal with these at the end, but in order to allow staff to answer questions if we have questions and then maybe even leave. We are putting them earlier in the agenda. Any questions for staff on city council action minutes that you receive? I don't see any hands raised, although I'm having connection, internet connection issues, and I'm not seeing good live feed of your videos. So holler if I'm not seeing your hand raised because the picture is still too, you know, an hour old. The other item is 2021 Planning Commission Work Program. Last meeting, we had a little bit of a hiccup because we had an out-of-date schedule. This time, seems the schedule is up to date. Any questions from the staff about the hearings coming up and the working sessions coming If not, we will move to the work session, and I will hand it back to Director Bechdel again to introduce the items and to introduce the presenters.
Great, thank you, Chair Mesba and commissioners. I am excited to introduce to you tonight the Streetscape Project. We've had lots of conversations over many years now about the town center and the community's vision for town center. The plan was adopted in the summer of 2019. As a part of that, there were multiple different implementation actions to be taken. We've done a few of those, including adoption of infrastructure projects into the transportation system plan. And one of the other key components connected to that is the Streetscape Plan, and as you know, you've seen it a couple times, there were some different concepts that were floated with the community. We received community input on those. The river concept was the highest favored, but also a desire to keep some of that streamlined and maybe not being too curricular to respect a streetscape and acknowledge some of the components of the technological innovation concept that was also favored. So the team is back tonight. They've got some additional detail that they've put in front of you, some design elements that try to capture what that will actually look like on the ground. As you can see, the draft plan that was in your pocket is very draft. It's just the initial coming together of concepts, but we wanted you to be able to see what that's starting to look like so we can get your input early. And then, one of the key aspects of it is that, we've heard this multiple times, is that we want to be strategic about where we do the most investment, you know, where are the most special places? Where do we spend the extra money? We don't have a lot of money to just put everything that we might want everywhere that we might want it. And so if we are being strategic about where we make our investments and where we put signature or special treatments, we want to be thoughtful about that. We want to recognize the town center plan in doing that. And so one of the key questions the team is going to have for you tonight is that, and thinking about kind of where we, where we might put a little bit more time and attention and detail in special treatment. And so with that, I'm going to hand it over to the team. They can walk you through where we are. We'll take any input you've got on the plan, but as you know, there's going to be a lot more meat put to those bones over the next couple of months. So with that, I will introduce Philip Bradford, Associate Planner from the city of Wilsonville and Project Manager for the Streetscape Plan.
Good evening, Chair Mesba, planning commissioners. My name is Philip Bradford, Associate Planner with the city of Wilsonville. The Town Center Streetscape Plan last went before you in March, where we confirmed the hybrid concept that combined the river environment and the technological innovation concept. This work session tonight was initially planned to present the draft plan. However, we're here tonight with two design-related questions prior to finalizing the draft for your review. What you'll see tonight is a preliminary draft with additional elements to be added later. Due to large size of town center and the cost involved in providing higher levels of design, the project team has outlined locations that will include additional details in the plan and would like to know which of these locations warrant higher levels of investment. So keep that in mind as we go through the presentation tonight. I will now pass the presentation to Ben Weber with Sarah to present the additional information regarding the locations and levels of investment of the proposed streetscapes within Town Center. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Philip and Miranda, for the introduction, and thank you, commissioners, for your time today, or tonight. Again, my name's Ben Weber with Sarah Architects, and I think we last met on this project in March, as Philip mentioned. So let me get our presentation up and running here. Just a moment. All right. So as Miranda and Philip mentioned, there's essentially two buckets of conversation that we want to have today. The first focuses on this critical path of confirming the locations that we'll be doing specific design with and the level of investment applied to each. So in topic one here, we'll be giving an overview of that overall location and investment framework, and some of the component pieces that help define those investment levels. Item two is really just a way of saying we'll have questions and a discussion about those recommendations. And then number three here is really welcoming any of your input or comments on the draft plan as it stands today. And as Miranda mentioned, you know, we have a few more months of refinement to do on that, and we'll be coming back to you, currently planned for August, to do a much deeper dive on the draft. So showing that on So showing that on the calendar, we're here sort of at the end of spring with the Planning Commission review of locations and investment levels, and we intend to go to City Council on June 21st to have a similar conversation, to get that kind of confirmation, as well as to ensure that City Council is comfortable with a number of the design elements, furnishings, and materials that were recommended to the plan. I know we've gotten into that information somewhat extensively here in Planning Commission. City Council hasn't had that deep of a review on some of those nuts and bolts of the Streetscape, so we're wanting to make sure in two weeks that they're comfortable with the materials and the overall framework that we're preparing for this plan. Then we'll be working the next couple months on the draft plan and getting into your review in August, and then September and October being adoption hearings, review, and then hopefully adoption of the plan sometime this fall. So to dive right into the locations and investment conversation, I want to show you this map, and this map will reappear at the end of the conversation when we start discussion. This is the way that we're organizing our locations. So we have seven specific spots itemized on this map that we'll be doing location-specific design for as part of the street design plan. You can see those listed out here on the left. Each of them relate to one of the locations identified in the Town Center Plan from a few years ago, basically taking those a step further in the Streetscape Plan. And then with each of those seven locations, we've assigned one of three levels of design investment. The signature design being the highest level, enhanced in the middle level, and then standard being the basic lowest level of investment. And I'll spend some time kind of defining what those investment levels mean, and then we'll be able to come back and talk about the combination of the locations and the degree of investment a little bit more holistically. So looking at those investment levels, just a bit more detail here. Standard design, we'll be using mostly existing public works standards and details, although integrating some products and materials that may be unique to the Town Center. That could include, you know, selecting an off-the-shelf bench that's unique to Town Center, lighting, trash cans, and some other, you know, elements that are going to be unique to the area and help create cohesion across all of the streets, even at the standard design level. Standard design will also include, you know, all of the fundamental curb extensions, crosswalks, bicycle facilities, you know, anything related to safety or providing multimodal access. You know, all of that will still be very much in alignment with the Town Center Plan recommendations of a few years ago. The enhanced design, you know, then sort of builds upon that, sort of has a foundation in the standard design features, but we, we know that they'll be adding more of those bespoke or unique elements to the Streetscape. There might be more locations for seating within the sidewalk or tying into some of the plazas on private property, more locations for stormwater and more extensive planters and the use of a broader tree palette, for example, areas set aside for, you know, artwork in the public realm and the Streetscape, and then more extensive use of some of these custom off-the-shelf products. And I guess by custom, what I mean is products that are readily available today, but that would be unique to the Town Center environment and you're not really seeing anywhere else in Wilsonville today to help provide that distinction. So we'll show examples of benches, you know, unique accent trees and other things that can help define this enhanced design. And then finally, the signature design, you know, takes a degree of customization to it. We're looking at both the sidewalk and the crosswalk taking on, you know, a custom concrete colorization and scoring pattern that would help aid in wayfinding and just enhancing the overall identity of some of these highest priority streets in the Town Center. Really extensive use of the signature seating, light fixtures, bike racks, tree grates, and other pieces. We'll show photos here shortly or renderings. And then I think probably most significantly, or at least related to the sidewalk and crosswalk, using these curb extensions, you know, which are of course a safety feature and a traffic calming feature, but turning those into really high-quality pedestrian amenity spaces with a custom seating design and some unique stormwater catchment features, something that really helps enhance sort of the intersection and the corner design area. So to give examples of, you know, other Streetscapes you may be familiar with around Oregon and the West generally, you know, here's just a few examples of standard design on the left, where you're seeing a fairly conventional concrete stamping pattern. Street trees throughout the environment, you know, tree grates where necessary, and an overall sort of improvement of the Streetscape realm, but not overly embellished by any means. It's still flexible enough to provide street seating, you know, wide enough to be used by pedestrians, accommodate, you know, high volumes of people walking, and then of course, you know, opportunities for on-street parking and those connections. Enhanced design, you know, starts to bring in, you know, maybe some unique features to the sidewalk materials such as stamped concrete in the furnishing zone. You'll see that on the top middle photo here, where that furnishing zone uses pavers in between trees and plantings just to bring a little bit of embellishment to that space. Or center bottom here, you know, where there's the selection of a unique bench, curved retaining wall, you know, more customized wrought iron tree grates and stormwater drains, you know, just taking a step up in sort of the investment level of the overall design. And then the signature design, these two images at right, really kind of going all-in with a, you know, a customized sidewalk treatment. You know, we're looking at a concrete pattern here in the Town Center, much more extensive use of stormwater and planting areas, potentially unique crosswalk designs and a more extensive use of, of a street lighting product, you know, that we're thinking of selecting for the Town Center. So far, we've started to apply these designs to two locations in Town Center, so two of the seven that we're recommending right now. You know, at left is a typical local street recommendation for Town Center, and this is kind of a generic location right now, since local streets will permeate throughout the Town Center in the future, you know, often built through places that are parking lots right now. But showing the way that street trees, you know, run up and down the block length, the sidewalk is clarified, curb extensions are included. You can see the place where the local street sort of blends into a signature street, so we're also thinking about those intersections and what happens in that curb extension area. And then in this particular instance, it's a facility recommended for a buffered bike On the right, we have the signature design example, and this is the Park Place Extension. So heading south from Park Place all the way down to the connection at Wilsonville Road. So this is a brand-new street construction. And this shows, you know, that concrete pattern and colorization in the crosswalks and the sidewalk, you know, extensive use of curb extensions and even mid-block crossings in this particular instance, street trees throughout. And then you can see at the corners, these sort of kidney bean-shaped planting areas. And so we'll show a better image of that in a rendering here shortly, but that's that distinct stormwater planting area that really embellishes and becomes kind of a hallmark feature at the corners and intersections of signature streets. So one piece that we continue to develop, and we're showing just a few slides here, it's going to be similar content to what you would find in the draft plan in your packet, we're basically itemizing out the elements of the Streetscape and making recommendations, you know, at the standard, enhanced, or signature level, and thinking about, you know, how to refine these and what kind of details and constructability, sort of feasibility and practicality do we need to be considering. So this sidewalk design, kind of zooming in on the standard, you know, it's going to be a pretty conventional broom finish and a basic scoring pattern. And, you know, what you're seeing here is a zoom in of the rendering. The enhanced, this is just one other example of using that furnishing zone and bringing pavers or a stamped material into those few feet that help separate the sidewalk from the street or the parking area or the bike lane, depending what facility is there. And then on signature, you can see one example, you know, a photo zoomed in in that little circle that's in the Portland Slab Town area. But we're thinking of, you know, considering something similar in the Town Center, looking at multiple colors and sort of a pattern that is unique and bespoke to the Town Center to help emphasize these signature Main Street areas. With benches and seating, you know, we're looking to recommend a family of seating options that's consistent, but, you know, runs the gamut from standard being a very attractive, I think, off-the-shelf wood and metal-framed, you know, backed bench that can be unique to the Town Center. Enhanced is this product called a Streetlife Rough and Ready Tree Isle Bench, and so that uses these wooden slats in a variety of different configurations. This product, as shown in this photo, is kind of extensively installed as part of a planter, but could also be narrowed down to be something that's, you know, just a few seats long and functions more like a freestanding bench, open some of these unique metal and wood elements to it. And then the signature is taking that same product and really customizing it around a planter and a stormwater facility that's in the curb extension that we've illustrated Street trees, these will continue to be a conversation, and we'll be tying this together more sensitively with the Urban Forestry Management Plan the next couple, not years, months. But we're thinking about the primary street tree, which would be used pretty extensively throughout Town Center on tree, on streets of any type of all three investment levels. An accent tree, it would start to be used more, I think, in the enhanced and signature locations where you're doing some of those fuller planter areas or larger planter areas. And then stormwater plantings, that's kind of a unique or a specific consideration where we're installing stormwater facilities, you know, what kinds of grasses, shrubs, rushes, and bushes make sense. We'll definitely be tying that in forestry plan as well as stormwater standards you have today and are continuing to update. So in this particular instance, we're kind of building out a palette of trees and plantings. We don't have standard, enhanced, and signature, but we just know there'll be more urban greenery as you move up in investment level and make those choices to bring in, you know, more planters and more stormwater in the enhanced and signature locations. A few others here, you know, again, these take the same cue where this would be a product used generally throughout the Town Center, and we would just expect them to be used more frequently, you know, in the enhanced and signature locations where you're wanting to make the investment in, you know, in this case, the tree grate, sort of a water droplet, river-based design to the tree grate, natural stone that can be used for seating, bollards, traffic control. It can be an embellishment inside one of your planting areas, and so it can be used, you know, in a variety of ways. We have it in the planter in this one rendering, but as we look at the other locations, all seven locations, we'll be thinking about where natural stone makes sense to deploy. And then a Core Ten 88 tactile pad at your corner curb cuts to just bring, you know, that metallic, that rusted metal design in and really drawing links between Core Ten and the Streetscape with the wayfinding and signage elements that you've decided on the past couple of years. So this is an image that we displayed to City Council in early April, but I don't think you all have officially seen it. This is a look at a signature street design based on that Park Place Extension that's kind of running from the center to the top right of the image. And this shows how that sidewalk and crosswalk pattern, the curb extensions, these built-up, built-in planters and seating areas all come together, and all of the other different pieces, like the primary street tree, you know, running the length of the block, a light fixture product that you see there at the corner and running down the whole street, bike racks, and then just overall flexibility in the sidewalk to have, you know, other planters at the building edge, if you wanted those, spill-out seating from restaurants. We have a parklet, you know, shown replacing an on-street parking stall in this particular instance. So this is kind of the sum total of all those different pieces, showing one example of a signature street. So now knowing those locations and that basic framework for the investment levels, I want to show this map again, and then I'm going to flash our questions on screen here and then come back to this map. So question number one, do you agree with the locations identified as those that should be highlighted in the final plan to get the detailed designs necessary to direct future investment? And then of those locations, which areas warrant the standard, the enhanced, or the signature design? So we can talk about, you know, any one of these locations that draws your attention or you have specific thoughts about, but definitely keep in mind that though we're only looking at, you know, seven locations for design through this Streetscape Plan, we're hoping to tackle basically all of the potential design issues that would come up at the standard, the enhanced, or the signature level, so that those lessons can be applied to, you know, all of the other streets in the Town Center that we aren't specifically looking at. So we want to make sure we're as extensive as possible in our product selections, thinking about all the different mobility configurations and just all the different uses of the street and how it ties into, you know, your framework for development and urban design in the Town Center.
Ben?
Yes.
I have a question. In order to determine where most, the most focus and the most investment could go, I'm not clear yet on how, what decisions are being made about flow. I live above this area. I travel the loop almost every day. And what I'm not clear about is I have three choices when I want to come down to Wilsonville Road. I can go right, left, or center. Where is the center of the, where is the center of the development going to be? It seems to me that maybe that's where the signature, that area needs to be most enhanced as it moves outward. I mean, that's where I'm kind of stuck.
Yeah, that's a great question, you know, that we want to make sure these streets still offer a lot of mobility solutions. We're taking a lot of our cues from the Town Center Plan two years ago, and particularly with with these signature locations like Park Place and the extension, which are really considered the main streets of town center.
Okay.
So that's three and four on the map here, where the streets are festival streets or accessing the retail core. It also includes twelve, which is the promenade, and that's a no-car street. So that's a really high-quality walking and biking location.
Right.
Particularly to make a link to the High Five Bridge.
I mean, I'm curious to know what everyone else thinks, but it would just seem to me that you put your most bang for the buck in the areas where most people are going to be and where there's going to be the highest level of enjoyment and appreciation, not in the outside areas that may be pass-through areas but may not get as much traffic or bring as much pleasure to people enjoying the park.
And that is, if I may, Mr. Weber, Commissioner Gallagher, three and four, right in the middle, are going to be the main street, so to speak, of this redesign and redevelopment. And that's where the focus of traffic and especially pedestrian traffic, but also some car traffic is going to be, that's where the activity is going to be centered. So that's why I think they are doing signature there to address exactly the kind of principle, design principle you were bringing up.
Yeah, and I agree with that.
Yeah, and Ben, I guess the question I've got is, and it took me a minute, I was scrambling through the Wilsonville site to get to the town center plan so that I could look at a picture of the land use. So I wish that that would have been part of this so that we could see that comparison. And so I was able to finally find that, and it has the Main Street District highlighted throughout Park Place from north to south. So I guess my question is, why isn't the signature design being highlighted for that entire route and not just, I'll say, the lower two-thirds of it?
You mean all the way up to the...
Town Loop.
The top of Town Loop?
Yep. Yeah, so that whole area, as I identified, is the Main Street District and the Town Center Land Use Plan.
On the picture I'm looking at, that section would be number two up there. Where does Park Place end?
At Parkway.
Town Center.
Yeah, I think two is this unmarked location on Park Place, and that's what you're speaking of, Commissioner Heberline.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, looking for why that was a part of the signature design.
Yeah, you raise, I think, a broader point here that we haven't applied an investment recommendation to every street in the town center so far. We've been focusing on identifying just the seven locations that we'll be detailing out through this plan. And so our thinking to this point was that three and four really captures a lot of the key features of Park Place, right by the park, and then the extension. We're not trying to ignore number two, but we're just turning our attention to the other locations to detail those out.
Yes, but I think, Ben, the point is that you have to get to it, and in order to get to it, when you're on Parkway, if you go straight onto Park Place, you're going to be on two. I mean, in other words, that's going to be your welcome here. So should that be the orphan? I mean, it just seems if you're going to create an atmosphere of bringing people into an environment, you know, I think it's a really important point.
Where is the town center welcome sign going to be on that roadway? Is that going to be right at the Loop, at Parkway?
I don't know.
I believe some come off Wilsonville Road, but I would have to check the signage and wayfinding plan.
From the north, that would make sense that that might be, either there or Canyon Creek.
Because where your arrow for three stops at the top is pretty much right where, across from the movie theater, where you, basically the street ends and you go up a very high bump onto the winding, so there's a, right now there's a demarcation, the street ends and then you go up into this area to get to Courtside.
If you survive the famous storm sewer.
[laughing].
Swallow's Car's Hole.
So, I mean, that's where the arrow ends, it's sort of like, well, there's an orphan street right above it, but that would be how, I mean, if I were going to go to the park and come to that area, I wouldn't go around Town Loop and come up, I'd go straight in. It just seems, it just seems like, again, I think it's the flow, I think it's how do you want people to come in and out, ingress and egress, and that's where your atmospherics should be.
So, Ben, just to make sure that I understand, from what this is, this is not, this isn't saying that these are the only three places where we would have signature designs, this is just, these are some areas we're going to focus looking at?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're creating prototypes, is that correct, Ben?
Yeah, creating prototypes that are grounded in actual locations, and Philip and Kim and I will talk about this later on, as we prepare this plan the next couple of months, should we make recommendations for the investment level on every street, at least at the map level, and then we'll be using the prototypes on seven locations. And how are you...
Just to offer a quick clarification to the commissioners, we will, this plan will identify essentially the investment level for every street and town center, whether it's internal street locations, the different components of Main Street, Courtside. We won't have a rendering from the project team for every single segment of every single road. So as Ben is describing, we will have these seven different essentially locations with renderings that would call out, they'd be the prototype, they would call out the specifics of what would be incorporated in those locations for different types of streets in town center, whether it's signature, enhanced or standard.
Okay.
So we will have essentially, those will be the investment levels, we will have renderings for those with details. Those will then guide the project team in the future at implementation, whether the city is constructing a road or a developer is coming in and constructing a road, that will set the framework for what needs to be included in the signature design for a specific segment. Now, that will get translated out, staff will come up with the consultant team before the final adoption document, we will have it inventoried where those different signature enhanced and standards will get applied. We just may not have a specific rendering for every single one of them because we'll end up with potentially fifteen to twenty segments or roads highlighted, and we don't have the budget to do twenty renderings. So we're essentially creating prototype renderings, but we will know how we will apply them moving forward. So this is a good discussion in terms of, and I think it's good to pose the question to Planning Commission, what we're hearing is, as staff and the project team moves forward, that northern part of Park Place, that full Main Street from the Loop to Wilsonville Road should all be signature. And that's helpful input for you to give us, to make sure that that is what we highlight. So I think if you have other observations, like how you would want existing Courtside to be treated, we would take that input. We would take input on the different pieces of the road network for town center if you have input on how you'd like it to be categorized. We also, the secondary question is, are these the seven locations you want the prototype? So is there a, like, a location where you'd actually want to depict the rendering different from what you see on the map? So hopefully I've helped make that distinction because it's kind of a nuanced, there's kind of two pieces within it.
I would like to also remind the commissioners who were part of the discussion of the redesign of the town center, that we always knew that development was going to be happening in phases because the whole entire area is too big to tackle in one fell swoop. That's why we said this is a 25-year plan. At the time, if memory serves me, we were not in a place to identify the phases. Miranda, are we any closer to be able to identify phases?
Part of it depends on if we see development in the short term. So that will influence that. We are working on an infrastructure funding strategy that will look specifically at phasing. That is somewhat influenced, though, on whether or not we receive any large applications between now and the next probably year or two.
So my first kind of response to the question you asked, Miranda, is if you're going to do this presentation to City Council upfront, make it very clear that this is not a phasing, that we are not yet determined the phasing, but we are looking at segments as prototypes for design that will then be put in the context of whatever phasing makes sense in the coming year or so. And these are the areas we have selected to groundroot our prototype design. And so so far, what we heard was three and four look like, you know, there's consensus that those should be signature segments and they're representative for that kind of a design treatment. And then what you were asking, Miranda, is so what about the rest of these? Are there any suggestions or ideas about that?
Considering with the reminder that this will be phased, I do think that what's omitted from this is the segment of Parkway that connects town center to Wilsonville West, that kind of seven o'clock road, if you were looking at this as a clock, the one that's between four and six. That one, I think, would warrant a more enhanced or even signature design because I bet it will be one of the first and one of the most heavily trafficked through the early phases, regardless of where this starts, and so I don't want that one to be overlooked too much. I think it would be either enhanced or signature myself.
So Commissioner Willard, is it an area that you would want to see as one of the prototype layouts or just that that's a, we want to make sure that that area is a signature design area?
The only reason I'm thinking of prototype is because you prompted me to pull up the town center plan as well, and I'm looking at the map, and it's highlighted significantly in there as well with open space, that segment is, so it just is a little bit different from the prototypes that we've seen so far, if I'm reading it correctly.
And currently, that's, they have that as enhanced versus the signature.
Is that true?
You're talking about the angled Park Place here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have that on this map, but that is a city-identified framework project for town center, and I think we're assuming it's a signature quality street right now.
Then the assumption would be that that would be similar to twelve, and so we're doing a prototype for twelve, and you would see something similar in that area as well?
Exactly, yeah, we had previously had both on there, but decided to emphasize twelve to capture most of the elements of a promenade street. But if Park Place, you know, running between four and six here feels immediate enough and sort of central enough to the early phases of town center, we can certainly consider putting it on the list.
Or just doing a swap and doing that instead of twelve?
So this is from my senior planner, I just wanted to jump in and provide a little context, I apologize in advance if I cut out, I'm being a little spotty tonight. But that in the town center plan is envisioned to be in the future converted to a promenade, similar to the location identified in location twelve. However, I think the one reason we as staff have identified illustrating twelve as opposed to the Park Place location that would be a promenade in the future is that we didn't have necessarily a cross-section adopted with the town center plan just because there was a little more uncertainty with how exactly that space would transition. And so given that, you know, we envision that there potentially could be transit in there in the future, but there would be bicycle space and pedestrian space, but it's less clear exactly how that will lay out. So we do have a little more certainty to go off of from the cross-section for location twelve, and that is why we would recommend illustrating that one in lieu of the other one. But that being said, if there is input on that investment level as well as, you know, any other ideas about how that should be designed, I think we can take that into account. And so I think that's why we did not include that on this list initially.
That makes sense, I'm fine with that.
Well, the other thing to remind commissioners about is the issue of phasing also brings in into play what goes first. If you turn that diagonal into a promenade before you have constructed four and six, while you're constructing four and six, your traffic isn't going to be able to use that as a detour. So that will have to come after four and three are done so that your main street has traffic on it, and then the side street can be taken out of service and turned into a promenade. So all of these become issues of what happens first, what follows that, and what makes sense in the design and functioning and implementation of the infrastructure. So the question that was asked on what about this and what about that is, where is the commission on number six, number eight, number nine as prototypes, and number twelve?
Yeah, I'll jump in, I'll say I'm okay with these as the prototype locations. I think for, you know, presentation to council and others, it would be much clearer if we were talking about prototype design locations and not recommended locations or investment. It just sends the wrong message. When I looked back, I said, how can I make a choice on investment if I don't know how much they cost? And so that was one thing that really caught on for me. So I think a different messaging would help this a lot, and we'll have some of the community managers here answering from the commission, but I'm okay with the general location.
Thank you for that.
I concur. Yeah, I can agree with Ron on that point. I am curious to know what the thinking of the team is about how we integrate the streetscape along Town Center Park, existing Town Center Park, with the design of Town Center Park itself. That is already, that's an established feature, and I'm wondering how it gets extended into, how it gets integrated with the new streetscape around it. with the new, with the new streetscape around it. So one of the visualizations I'd like to see is how that might be treated, that juxtaposition.
Especially, I assume Jerry, when it comes to three. Any of the rendering of three should show what part will look like
Right, and also
from the segment.
Three, from a timing standpoint, three seems to me is amenable to much more immediate development. And, and we could be building the identity of the whole area outward from the center that way.
Why don't you expand on that a little bit? Why is that the low hanging fruit?
Town Center Park is there. It's well established, it has an identity. And the, I'm not speaking with regard, not even taking into consideration the establishments that are across from it. I don't know how amenable those are to, to early change. But I am aware that, that there is opportunity for substantial redevelopment in that whole Fry's property across from Town Center Park. And so it just seems to me that three is right there in the middle of this and it ought to be where we ought to be thinking early development and taking advantage of existing, the existing landmarks available at Town Center Park.
Good, thank you for that. Any of the other commissioners have anything to add? Commissioner Tuziski, you haven't said anything tonight.
Um, yeah, I would agree, I would echo with pretty much what everyone said. I do like that number, can you hear me? Okay, I do like that number six is more of the enhanced design, even though it's not the main artery, it's going to have a lot more traffic and likewise probably for the other side as well. So it looks good to me so far.
I have a question, and this is in reference to what Jerry had said there. You know, while it does seem to make sense to me, I'm just wondering, and Ben, I'll ask you this, from I guess the construction standpoint and the process of starting the construction, what Commissioner Greenfield said, would that cause an issue with how construction would start on this? I mean, how, in my mind, that brings up a question to me is, to where would initial construction start?
Yeah, it's a great question. I think some of it's going to relate back to the overall phasing and what minor or major site redevelopments, you know, warrant new streets or adjacent street improvements, whether it's Fry's or anything else. That's one factor. I know that the framework streets have been identified as priorities within the Town Center to be jump started by the city and a potentially greater share of public investment. And so those signature or framework streets, you know, potentially happen at an earlier phase as sort of a catalyst for the Town Center. That's another way of looking at it. So there's, I think, still a lot of moving pieces as to which of these happens first necessarily. And then, you know, all the phasing for construction and traffic flow and detours and trying to minimize disturbances as much as possible. So in the plan, we'll be speaking in sort of general terms about implementation and trying to make these streets ready for a variety of different sort of phasing options in the future. And that'll include some guidance on, you know, how do you build half streets? Or how do you stub out streets at intersections and set them up for, you know, later completion when other sites redevelop? Does that answer roughly what you were asking about?
It does, it brings up some other questions too, when I think about that Town Center there and that hub of activity. But yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, great. Yeah, to Commissioner Greenfield's point, you know, number three is a very central street and its adjacency to the park, its qualities as a festival street, and the fact that we're potentially realigning the street a little bit so that it links up with number four. Those are a couple of marks in its favor to give it, you know, some detailed design attention. And you raised a couple of good points that we can show in the illustrations. Any other comments or questions out there? And I appreciate it if you want to all, you know, spend a few days looking at this and digesting it. I think Philip is available to take, you know, your email comments or any other way that you want to comment. I know this is a significant set of decisions to make on somewhat short notice here so we can gather your input in the coming days as well. Okay, should I proceed on to the question about the draft plan? All right, well, thank you for your input on this location investment bit. The final question here, and this is pretty open ended at this point, are there any other key elements or considerations that should be included in a refined draft streetscape plan? I think we've already discovered a few, like more clarity about how we're distinguishing prototypes from investment levels is certainly one of those, as well as some of these implementation and phasing relationships. But in your early look at the draft in progress, do you have any questions, concerns, or suggestions about things that you think are important to include?
I'm not sure if this is the right time to bring this up, but I will. Concerning transportation, SMART, et cetera, and the flow of that, is that considered or is this too early to ask about that?
No, it's not too early to ask about. We're looking at, you know, transit shelter design and how to fit a shelter or a conventional, you know, post stop into the streetscape in a variety of locations. And then we're coordinating with Eric Loomis at SMART to identify a couple, you know, potential or likely transit stop locations in the Town Center. But we want to be flexible enough that SMART can reroute, think about different stop locations, you know, or even a consolidated mini transit center within Town Center as well. So we're trying to be flexible for those changing plans too.
Yeah, I asked a question with the redesign that we're looking at here. And just the flow and also the need for our residents in these other areas to be able to get around. And particularly since I would imagine even though there will be some car flow, but, you know, if we can, can pro take more of our city transit and if we have a nice flow around the city center and through as well. That's why I asked that question.
Commissioner Woods, if I may add, during the Town Center planning, we looked, we worked with SMART on our tack for that project. While we were developing the different cross sections that we designed for all the different street types in Town Center, we worked with them to ensure that streetwips and cross sections could accommodate transit and bus. Likely what we would see is their preference would be a pullout. So we'd be looking at the conversion of like an on-street parking space. So if you typically have on-street parking on that street, then you would just have a spot where there's no parking and it serves a transit pullout instead. We're open to other potential designs with them, but that is the preferred design. And we are planning on having the courtside rendering include an example of that because that is the most likely location where we will see a future transit stop or at least one of the locations where we will see a future transit stop. So absolutely very important priority that we are keeping in mind and making sure SMART is on our tack for both projects.
Thank you.
I noticed pleasantly that the designs are doing as much as possible to maintain flexibility in different uses and changes in uses over time and different seasons and so forth. I really encourage you to keep up that effort because it's very difficult to know what the spaces are going to be used for and how they will look. And so the design and the expenditures in the infrastructure need to be so that it's flexible enough to accommodate as things change, as expectations change and so forth. And I'm seeing some of the early signs of it in the current designs and I congratulate you on that and hope that you'll keep up with that kind of focus as well.
Absolutely, thank you.
So is that the end of the Town Center streetscape presentation? Or is this the first piece?
That's it for me. And I think the same rule applies that if you have thoughts on the draft plan in the coming days and weeks, pass those along to Philip Bradford and he can coordinate communicating those on to me. All right, well, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bates Show is back to you.
Thank you Chairman, bye commissioners. I am going to keep this presentation short because we have already done a lot this evening. And you have been talking about middle housing almost every month for the last six months. So you know the, you know, the purpose of the project. You know, kind of the important decisions you've made to date. We have some updated revisions in front of you. I know there was interest among commissioners on a report out from city council, which I'm sure project manager Dan Polly would be happy to provide as a part of this overall presentation in terms of where things are headed. So I'm just going to go ahead and introduce Dan Polly, Planning Manager and Project Manager for our middle housing in Wilsonville project. And he'll introduce his team and what the primary outcomes he's hoping to hear from you on tonight.
Thanks Miranda, and good to see everyone again tonight. And just want to make sure no one needs a break before we dive into something else. Are we good? All right. So let me start by updating you, city council, we had a work session Monday evening. And city council has received a lot of comments with, often with differing views. And they were very thoughtful. There weren't a lot of questions about kind of that larger package that we reviewed last month that they've asked. There was still continued discussion about that added 10% or that required 10% in Bilbois. What am I saying? It's getting late. And Frog Pond, that other planned development we've been working on for a while. So, you know, I wasn't as strong, I sensed overall like, okay, that makes sense from the council. I think there may be continued conversation though. But at this point, we've moved forward with integrating that into the code edits that we're working on. With that, let me, you know, the APG team, they've been with us over a number of work sessions now. So again, we have Kate Rogers and Joe Dills, welcome you guys. And Ben Weber, who's also worked on this project, is also available for questions as needed as well. So good to have their support, they've been a great team to work with. So let me fire up the presentation then.
Dan, do you, do you want me to share the, my screen and run the slides or we can trade off?
If you have it handy, that's, that's great Kate. I have it handy there as well.
I'll go ahead and do it.
Okay. Thanks Kate. So first of all, let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So what we're going to cover tonight, so we're going to take a break from the code review to talk about some infrastructure analyses, which have actually been outside the scope that APGs worked with us on. And just wanted to report out on, on what we've seen from those infrastructure analyses. And then we'll get into another chunk of draft code and plan updates focused on design standards in Frog Pond, which I think the commission will find very interesting. So, next slide please. So from here, just wanted to map out where we're going from here. Next month, we're going to talk about some, specifically about parking, which was one of the things that council wanted a focus on during this, during this project. And we have thought about that, put it in the survey, done a lot of work on that. So going to discuss that next month. Then August will be an opportunity, add a work session, do a final check in, any final cleanup, any, provide any updates based on additional feedback we get over the summer. And then a public hearing on all this in September. Again, want to, as we always do, show you the desired project outcomes. I hope you're getting a handle on these at this point. But really want to, to call out again is meeting the variety of housing needs that continues to come up in conversation. As well as why, tonight we are going to talk about whether there's infrastructure to support middle housing and what the city is doing about that. Next slide please. So let's delve right into the infrastructure analysis, and this will be Dan talking. Had an engineer to join us, but unfortunately they weren't, something came up and weren't able to make it tonight. But I think, so if there is some specific engineering questions, I may need to just write those down and get back to the commission. So next slide. So really what the idea was as we approached this, Wilsonville really has a strong history. Many of you have worked through our infrastructure planning processes. We have, we have a strong history of robust infrastructure planning. And so we had a feeling that, and as we do that planning, we always are conservative with estimates, meaning that we, we add a buffer that we're not planning for the bare minimum, but we're planning to make sure that we have enough. And so there's always that added capacity, but not too much capacity that we're always working with as we do these infrastructure analysis. So the knowledge that we've done that, we didn't anticipate a lot of issues with the infill. We knew there'd be more, more to look at around Frog Pond in particular, particularly Frog Pond East and South, and I'll touch on that. And so overall, I think the results are really what, there weren't any big surprises for us as the sensitivity analysis came back. And I also want to highlight is we showed as the data's and the report and as we talked about it tonight, we were, you know, these aren't numbers we're talking about of what we actually will likely get built, but we wanted to make sure that in an event that they but we wanted to make sure that in an event that they did occur that we're not running into any infrastructure issues. So specifically, we tested infrastructure around traffic and roads, water and sanitary sewer. Typically, you also see a storm sewer here, but we're actually in the middle of updating our stormwater master plan. And that plan's using updated projections and assumptions with middle housing in the mix. And so those results will come back, planning infrastructure with middle housing in mind. And for each of these, we worked with the same consultants that did the initial master plan. So they're familiar with our system, familiar with the data, familiar with the assumptions that we've used previously. And so adding on these additional assumptions, it just made sense and the process moved pretty smoothly. So next slide, please. So going back, I mean, we mentioned this months ago, but I think it's something that is noteworthy as we look at this is where we're focusing as we're thinking about infill in existing neighborhoods. Because a lot of HB 2001 did not override existing CCNRs that may prohibit limit middle housing. And so as we worked through this, there is an assumption that where there's an active HOA with CCNRs, most likely those CCNRs limit how much middle housing can happen. So we looked primarily at areas where there's not an active HOA or CCNRs that, to the best of our knowledge, are enforceable, that would limit middle housing. And so these are areas that don't have those other barriers and would likely, and also often these are areas with some larger lots that may have room to add middle housing as well. So you can see on this map where this focus highlights, you know, Daydream Ranch, Eximum Oil Park, Courtside Estates here by Town Center, the area around Montebello, which already has actually quite a bit of middle housing. So those are, these are the areas that we really focused on in terms of looking at how much capacity they'd have with added middle housing. So next slide, please. So let's talk a little about growth rates then. And I want to slow down and explain this a bit, but hopefully in a concise manner. So really, going back to the idea that we wanted to use fairly realistic numbers, but also be conservative, give a buffer, make sure that if we're really testing the system, that we're not giving it an easy test, that we're giving it a reasonably hard test. And so we started with a combination of numbers based on some data we had available such as metro forecasted infill. Information from other jurisdictions have done studies around middle housing and similar housing, such as one we referenced from Washington County. We thought about the past rates that we've seen ADUs, which have been allowed in years, for years in these types of neighborhoods in Wilsonville. And once we kind of got comfortable with what those numbers were, we added a buffer of about, you know, for 2030 of about half a percent. So essentially 50% more growth. And then for 2045 and 2050, added an additional buffer of about 2% to really test the system and see where there's any potential for issues. Because really, the outcome we were looking for is is there an area that we need to study more? Or is it going to pass with flying colors no matter what happens? So we were really testing to see where we needed to look further. So I want to pause. Are there any questions about what these numbers are? Why we use these growth rates in the modeling? All right. So let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So really, the headline then for these existing neighborhoods is there's really not concern. Middle housing can easily be accommodated without stressing the existing planned infrastructure. So, next slide. So then we started looking at future neighborhoods. There's a greater potential for impact in a lot of these. Particularly, the state rules require that we plan these areas at 20 units per net acre, which is higher than we had previously forecasted. So we had to, that difference had to be put into the modeling. And so when we talk to this, we're talking about the urban, not all of our urban reserves, but just urban reserves that maybe could be added to the UGB by 2050 or so. So I mean, those are the areas we looked at. So areas that we didn't really think would be added to the UGB, we didn't include. So we're talking, so you can see on this map the areas we're talking about. Next slide, please. And a future growth area we do know more about is Frog Pond West. As we've talked hours about at this point, you're aware of the additional allowed density to meet, to get to the eight units per net acre. Also, as we've explained, that duplexes don't count towards that density because of how the state rules are written and interpreted. So in addition to that 138 or so units, we added some more. Again, just to see where there might be problems, assuming that maybe duplexes would occur in addition to those allowed additional units. So the number we use to really test the system is 200. Again, anyone's watching this, not expecting 200 units out there, but again, the purpose was to test the system. And so the results, next slide, please. Is not surprisingly, we need to, we need to look at particularly that northeast quadrant a little bit more because that is where the biggest change is. And as you may be aware, we already are under contracts, have contracts signed to do that work as part of the Frog Pond East and South Master Plan. So we have the right people on board. We feel good about the process we have in place to do that study over the coming year and really have answers before a lot of this infrastructure gets built so we can change it, look at the size of infrastructure as well as how we're going to finance that infrastructure in order to accommodate this added requirement to plan infrastructure at 20 units per net acre. For Graham's Ferry and Wilsonville Southwest Urban Reserves, we call them, you know, in these timelines, not a lot of concern. But again, when these come into the UGB in the future, we're going to be doing infrastructure planning with them as part of those mass, concept and master plans. And that would then, we'd look at that in more detail at an appropriate point. So at this juncture, not a lot of concern that we're not going to be able to adapt and plan adequate infrastructure for these areas. But we will certainly, as part of Frog Pond, there'll be a lot of discussion over the next year of how these different numbers that the state's asking us to plan for actually impact infrastructure size and cost and how that translates into cost of, cost passed on to individual units. Next slide, please. So that was the last slide on infrastructure. So I wanted, let's go back one, Kate, and I'd open it up for the commission to ask any questions or make any comments about these infrastructure analyses that we did. Any comments, commissioners? I'm not seeing anyone raising hands. Okay. Go ahead. We don't have any comments or questions. All right. So again, as always, if there's any follow-up, when you've had some sleep in the morning, you think of something, feel free to email me or give me a call. Happy to talk about it. So next, let's talk about design standards. That's a major focus of this work session tonight. A lot of the work that we've been doing, a lot of, and it's a significant component of this whole middle housing project. So, go to the next slide. So where these design standards come in, most of them are under this category three, where there's some local, it is a requirement that we deal with the design standards and make sure that they don't violate the state rules. But also, there's some local flexibility that we have and some compliance choices that we've had to make. Next slide. So really, what are then the compliance options as we're talking design standards? And I wanted to clarify, when we're saying design standards, we won't touch much on what we call citing standards, which are things like lot size and setbacks because one of two things are either prescriptively required by the state to be a certain thing or they're really not changing much or being impacted much by what we're doing. Design standards are more things like architectural design, entries, glazing, lot coverage, things like that. So really, there's really four options. The first one is, and the basis of this is that the design standards for single or for middle housing can't be any more onerous or put any, add additional costs to a housing unit than would be comparable to a single-family home. And so there's some very strict rules about how we administer that so that same process and type of equivalent standards to for middle housing as detached single-family. That said, the state recognizes as do we that there are some uniqueness to different types of housing that may need some specific standards. So the state has allowed for some limited specific standards for different types of housing because just by their nature, they're different and they need to be regulated a little different. So the main, one choice is design standards that are the same as detached single-family homes. So that's really a safe place where a city can go. If they apply the, a standard to a detached single-family home, then it's legitimate to apply that to middle housing as well. The next one is to adopt the middle housing design standards from the state model code. Again, the way that House Bill 2001 was structured is you either adopt your own standards or the state model code applies. But as well as providing kind of that default regulations, the model code also provides, okay, these are things that are vetted. We spent a bunch of money on consultants and came up with some good design standards that should work in most situations across the state. And really, the way then it was built is that if you adopt those model code standards, you're safe. That's a reasonable standard to have. So you can adopt those design standards and you don't have to adopt them for the whole city. You can pick and choose which zone you apply these to. You kind of pick and choose some of those model code standards to use as appropriate. The next one would be to have some specific standards for different types of middle housing, but have them less restrictive, right? If you're going to be less restrictive than the state standards, the state's supportive of that. The other, the fourth option, which we're not recommending the city pursue, is to adopt alternative middle housing design standards, where it is more restrictive and specific to a middle housing type, but the rules have a lot of requirements, a lot of analysis to show that in the marketplace, that this isn't going to lead to undue cost for middle housing and the burden's on the cities to demonstrate that through a lot of analysis. Next slide, please. So based on that and the understanding and also really thinking, being very thoughtful about the context that we deal with in our different zones, our different areas of Wilsonville, the type of development that's occurred, the development pressures and the look and the feel that we're trying to get in the different neighborhoods is we pick and chose and are recommending to you the compliance options. So for areas including Bilbois, Frog Pond and Old Town that have, you know, a very specific aesthetic, a very specific look and feel is controlled by these existing design standards that a lot of thought and effort have been put into over the years, that we want to keep that. We've heard that through the outreach. We want to keep, keep that. We don't want to lose that. And so for that reason, the idea is in Bilbois, Frog Pond and Old Town, to keep the, those detached single-family design standards and apply them to middle housing, keep the same bulk of building, the same look and feel again as exists in those neighborhoods. There's a couple of areas, particularly Frog Pond and Old Town, that we just need to tweak it a bit to make sure it complies. But Phil, it's minor enough that it's not going to substantially change how those standards operate and end up creating development that meets the objectives in those specific areas. For the rest of the city, where we don't really have any design standards now, like a single-family house now, when it comes into the planning department for a building permit, we just make sure it meets setbacks. We don't care how high the door is, how many windows it has, any of that. Usually, the market's delivered pretty well on something that is attractive to the marketplace. So, but in recognizing that, we also want to make sure that these rules that the state's come up with seem pretty reasonable to apply in these cases. And so we're recommending we do because it really helps us be thoughtful and apply reasonable standards to different development scenarios. Also want to kind of take some of those lessons learned through all these years of planning and permitting in Bilbois and Frog Pond and apply those throughout the city where it makes sense. And those would apply both to detached single-family homes as well as middle housing throughout the city. And these are about articulation of longer facades of buildings to break them up and make them attractive when they're in the public view shed, as well as something that's been very supportive, worked pretty well in Bilbois and Frog Pond and something that we heard support for in our surveys is this idea of variety and making sure that no two homes right next to each other are exactly the same to provide that visual variety. And so, next slide, please. So with that, I will turn it over to Kate. Actually, let me pause before I do that to see if there's any questions at this juncture of kind of the options of compliance and why we chose or any thoughts on the paths that we're recommending for compliance.
Daniel, are you looking for us to provide some comments right now? Or I shouldn't say comments, but whether we agree with the recommendations now or you looking for that later?
Well, I would say if there's kind of those big picture items of the kind of approach that we're taking, we can discuss those now, but if it's more into specific types of standards, let's get through some more description of the standards before we get into that detail. So looking if there's any kind of broader picture of just related to why we're choosing the compliance methods that we're recommending, I think it would be appropriate to take those comments now.
I think your recommendation reflects what our discussion has been to this point pretty well.
Yeah, my only, my only additional comment would be it would be helpful to have a better understanding personally of what the state model code is and how that differs from maybe what we see in Frog Pond and Bilbois and get a feel for kind of what level of rigor there is behind that code to get a feel for what that might look like in the rest of those developments.
Sure. And we'll touch a little on that, Commissioner Heverline. Kind of the headline there is a lot of the standards are of the same flavor that we see in the residential neighborhood zone, such as percentage of facade, of windows in public view sheds, required articulation on longer facades, driveway approaches and where you put driveways, widths of garages, things like that. So they're very, the same sort of character of standards that we see in the residential neighborhood zone. So in that sense, I think that may, as a project team, made us even more comfortable with them because they're of that same flavor that we're used to from Frog Pond.
That's great. Thanks, Dan.
So, with that, Kate, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thanks, Dan. And I think I would just add to that point about, you know, so comparing the model code to existing standards. I would say in general, Frog Pond and Vilbo have kind of more sort of architectural design standards, as opposed to things like windows and doors, so that they, they regulate more like facade details, and that kind of stuff isn't really covered in the model code. I would say the model code is a pretty limited set of design standards that really regulates some of the core features of design, so things like windows and doors, and like driveway widths. So, that, that should maybe help frame things a little bit. We'll, we'll get into some more of the details as I go along. And I'm going to try to go through things pretty quickly, because we're coming up on our, on our time here. I think, I imagine we're going to have to go past 8:30, if that's okay? Maybe I should just do a quick time check.
We're used to it, I'm okay. It's not my bedtime yet.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll see where we're, where we are.
Just feel okay, yeah.
We, we can check in again at some point and see, see how it's going. I guess I'll forge ahead, so.
Sounds good, go for it.
So, we'll start out by talking about the sort of new general standards that would apply to both single-family and middle housing throughout the city. And as Dan mentioned, a lot of these are kind of inspired by the existing standards in Frog Pond, and some of the language is just pulled directly from the RN Zone chapter, but they're also kind of responding to that visual preference survey that was done, and some of the comments about, you know, what features folks appreciate in, in residential design. So, let's see, the first one is the house plan variety standard, and this one is directly from the RN Zone. And this is the one that requires adjacent or opposite structures to have different elevations, and there are kind of specific options for how applicants can meet that standard. And then there's also kind of a new concept of architectural consistency, and so this one isn't pulled from any existing language, but the intent is to promote a harmonious design within a single residential structure by preventing the mix of conflicting architectural styles. And again, the standards themselves are more specific, but that's kind of the overall intent. And then, so the standards also include sort of a choice between articulation versus this idea of a unified roof structure. So, the articulation standard is from the RN Zone, and it requires at least one design feature, things like roofline variations, offsets, balconies, porches, and things like that, every 30 feet for a street-facing facade, so to kind of break up long, monotonous facades. But then, as an alternative option, a proposed standard would be to require a unified roof structure, and that's intended to achieve that sort of single-family appearance for, for structures that have more than one housing unit. And because this standard could be applied to single-family dwellings in addition to middle housing, it complies with that state requirement. So, again, it would be up to the applicant as to whether, which one of these two options they, they chose. So, we want to check in really quickly about these initial proposed standards and see how the planning commission is feeling about this. So, our questions are, first, do you support applying these standards to all single-family and middle housing in the city? And then, more specifically, do you like this option of a unified roof structure to promote a single-family appearance as an alternative to facade articulation?
Who wants to go first?
Do I have to, am I mute? No. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
I, I prefer the, I do not prefer the unified roof structure. I prefer the break.
You want to speak more to that, Commissioner Geller?
I think architecturally, it's much more interesting. You drive down a street, you see all the same roof, all the same level, I, I just, to me, I, look at the two pictures, I'm going to pick the one on the left. I think that wasn't, wasn't that the way I saw it, the slide before? Getting tired.
I, I don't think the one on the right does full justice to the concept. There are at least a couple excellent examples in Frog Pond build-out right now that have a very unified look, almost as if they're a single building, but are very, very not, are distinct in our, our duplexes. But at first glance, they have the appearance of a single building, and I don't think that it's just a matter of the roof style, if there's an overall architectural effect, and even in the facades, that give it a uni- give the building a unity, even though it is double. I, I think it's not enough to specify that the roof structure be unified. I think that the, the more general principle is that the architectural quality of the two units, or two or more units, needs to be unified.
I'll just clarify that there is also this architectural consistency standard that would apply regardless, and so I think that kind of gets more at that architectural consistency, unity comment.
Right, well, I don't think any more than that is necessary.
Yeah, from my perspective, you know, the question, I, I'm, I'm not one, also, I don't like the unified roof structure. To me, it looks like a big box. One, there's, there's no style to that structure, you know, with the roofing straight across. So, I would not be in support of that. And to the comments that were made earlier, particularly what Jared just said, I also would agree with that as well.
Certainly, certainly, the, the impression on the left is superior to a slab front, but that's not really the, the choice. You don't have to have a slab front as the alternative to the articulation of the picture on the left. Or, or a straight roofline, for that matter.
I would agree with that. I think, I think too, allowing the unified roof structure just provides more flexibility, and we could see more building of middle housing if, you know, the, the more flexibility is the better for me.
I guess I should also add that, you know, a building could, could do both. It could have a unified roof, but then also meet the architectural, or the articulation standards. It doesn't, you know, articulation isn't just about the roof, so.
Please be.
Yeah.
Can, can you go to the, the next slide, Tom, to make a break and answer both questions on there? Okay, so number two, since everybody else is talking about it, I'm okay with not some of either. For question number one, the, the question I have around applying these standards to all single-family and middle housing actually comes down to specifically around cottage clusters, and whether or not the house plan variety is too restrictive for cottage clusters, and if there's another alternative that we might be able to look at. And I'm really looking at cottage clusters as one of those opportunities to have truly affordable housing, although it's small. It's the one opportunity I think that we really have to make it affordable. And is the house plan variety putting a larger boot on those small houses by making them be different architecturally, which there means it's kind of structurally different? Does that drive more cost than we need to in those types of, of developments? I think for, for duplexes and quads and those types of things, it makes sense. I'm just not sure about down at the cottage cluster level.
Yeah, we can look at that, and we've looked at defining it a bit more in terms of like giving color, things like that, because that's what's shown in the visual preference survey. It's, at, at this point, it's been difficult to really define how much color difference is a color difference, to be clear and objective.
Yeah.
But we can continue to explore that and see if there are some kind of more detail, because, yeah, I, from what we've seen from the visual preference survey, it doesn't have to be a lot different to provide that visual variety. So, even sometimes just the different shade, the different, the different color is enough to provide that visual variety.
And, and what I was thinking is, is when you've got such a small rental area anyways, if you have a prominent tree right in front of the cottage cluster, that specific house, you're not going to necessarily see the fact that it's all the same elevation, if you have other details that you can put in maybe more cost-effectively than a different physical house.
I have a question. Before you were speaking about carrying forward the standards that have been used in the past that a lot of people like, is there anything that has been learned from what's been done in the past that you have decided not was a mistake, but could be left behind? And I know change is difficult, but, you know, if you, if you try 100 things, two of them out of them may not work. So, I'm just wondering, was anything learned that you decided, we tried that, didn't work out so well, maybe we won't continue to do it?
Yeah, I think we learned from Vilbo, because Vilbo, the Vilbo standards, which are very detailed, so much, I mean, we had to use a consultant architect to even review the plans, to be aware. So, I think simplifying, and we have learned that even simple variation standards get substantially the same effect. So, we don't have to have a detailed architectural standard, we just need to hit at those main, some main features that make a big difference.
Okay.
And that the market really delivers the rest and provides that variety.
Correct, okay. Okay, thanks.
Are we ready to move on? Okay.
All right, moving on. Okay, so next, we'll get into the standards that are specific to middle housing, so kind of forgetting about the single-family stuff for a while. And so, just to give kind of an overview of the model code, so the, as, as Dan has said, these draft standards are mostly adapted from the model code, and as a reminder, those standards can be applied to middle housing, whether or not they're applied to single-family. So, they're, they've kind of been deemed as, as acceptable. And as we've adapted the, the model code standards for Wilsonville, you know, we're not entirely copying and pasting over, we're, we're making tweaks to make the language consistent, things like that. We've also made some minor modifications to suit, to suit Wilsonville, so. One example is, I didn't, okay, yes, sorry. So, sorry, I'm losing my place in my notes. So, for cluster housing, so we're talking about the, sort of the detached versions of duplexes, triplexes, and, and quadplexes. We've proposed a combination of the model code standards for triplexes and quadplexes, and then a couple of, pulled, pulled in a couple of the standards for, from cottage clusters. So, because cluster housing is an optional housing type, the city isn't required to allow that housing type, the city has a little bit more flexibility to kind of customize the standards. So, that's just one example of, of a modification. And then, where the model code has included some options for the city to choose, we've generally tried, tried to go with the option that's really most consistent, either with the current standards, or with feedback that we've received in, in our outreach efforts. So, for example, and we're not really going to get into the driveway standards at this meeting, we're going to focus on those more at the, at the June work session, but, but just as, as an example, the city had the option of requiring driveways for townhouses to be shared for every two units, so kind of consolidated paired driveways. But the feedback from the survey and, and other outlets was that separated driveways were really preferred. So, in that case, that's the option that we've chosen to go with. And also, just to point out that a lot of the model code standards, as, as Dan has already said, are similar to those Frog Pond and Vilbo standards. So, things like entry orientation, window coverage, garage width, they're, they're similar, the details, you know, are, are different, and some of the specifics differ. But generally, these are not huge departures from what the city is already doing in, in certain parts of the, of town. So, I'll try to kind of run through a pretty quick overview of the, the model code, design standards for each middle housing type. Entry orientation for triplexes and quadplexes generally requires one main entry for each building or structure to, to face the street, or open onto a porch. For windows, 15% of each street-facing facade must be covered by windows or entry doors. Again, these are pretty similar to what's applied in Frog Pond today. Also, for triplexes and quadplexes, the width of garages and off-street parking areas are limited to 50% of the street frontage of the lot. And your packet also includes the, the proposed driveway approach standards. Again, kind of save your comments for those, those standards, because we'll talk about those more in July. And moving on to townhouses, the entry orientation and window coverage standards are just the same as, as they are for triplexes and quadplexes, so those are all pretty consistent. And again, driveway access and parking, we'll focus on those next month. And then, for townhouses, we also have a unit definition standard in the model code that's really very similar to the articulation standard that's required in the RN Zone. But the difference for townhouses is that each townhouse unit itself has to feature one of those kind of architectural features from a list, rather than requiring them to, you know, occur every 30 feet. And then, again, our initial draft proposal included this unified roof structure option for townhouses, with the thinking that, you know, it might be appealing to promote a more sort of single-family look, even for, you know, individual units on separate lots. But it sounds like, from what we heard, and we, we have another question about this one, seems like your answers will be similar. Basically, should we, should we offer the same option for townhouses as, as offered for a single-family and other types of middle housing? I guess maybe I'll ask, if anyone's answer is different for townhouses than it was before, let us know. Not hearing anything, so.
Nobody is trying to.
All right, well, that's helpful, so we'll, we'll think about that some more.
Is, are, are we talking about the possibility of, of restricting unified roof structure?
So, the possibility is, an applicant could either define each unit with an architectural element or feature, or they wouldn't have to do any of the articulation, and they could just have this unified roof structure idea.
The, the idea of making a, a middle housing development look like a large single-family residential house is one that has worked in many parts of the country. I don't know that unified roof structure is what mechanism was used in order to get to it.
Well, that one certainly doesn't.
Right. So, the, the issue, I guess, is, of what I'm, I'm sensing from the commission, is, can we get to what we're trying to get to in a, in a better way and still be objective with our standards, instead of doing this roof thing, which in the examples that you're showing definitely aren't really resonating?
They definitely aren't.
Right, they, they don't look like a single-family, large residential unit. So, that is what I'm getting.
Yeah, you know, it's, we, we talked about this idea of single-family appearance, and this is kind of what we came up with as a, as a, oh, we'll see if, we'll see what people think about this. But yeah, it's a very difficult thing to regulate, and you're right that there are probably lots of different ways to approach that, but it's really hard to put into clear and objective code language.
There are some good examples over in, in Carbonell, and there are a couple of brand-new examples over in Frog Pond you could photograph, that do that achieve it.
Well, the question, Jerry, is whether they can come up with Well, the question, Jerry, is whether they can come up with clear and objective standards in order to get to it. To me, these examples, if you push them to an extreme, you will end up with an old-fashioned motel. Which had a unified kind of roof and all these cubby holes that people kind of check into. And that is definitely not the look you want to get, so.
No, I mean, you're, you're, you can't depend on every, every design having the kind of taste level that we're, we're talking about, yeah. And that's.
I think specimen, I think identifying a unified roof structure as a, as a, as a, an alternative is almost inviting.
Yeah, exactly.
Architectural abuse.
I agree, it is.
Good feedback, appreciate, appreciate the thoughtfulness. Very good.
Okay.
Let's move on.
Thank you. Okay, now cottage clusters. So this is, you know, sort of a more unique type of housing with a more sort of specific set of design considerations. So as you'll see in your draft packet, the proposed design standards for cottage clusters are quite a bit more detailed and extensive than for the other housing types. Again, the standards that we recommend are largely from the model code. For cottage clusters, there are some areas where there's a little more flexibility to kind of set some of these numeric standards, particularly on this slide. So for example, number of dwellings per cluster. Our recommendation is a minimum of four units and a maximum of eight units per cluster. And that's how many units can sort of share one common courtyard. And that's not to say that a development couldn't be larger than eight units. It just means that, that ninth unit would then trigger an additional courtyard space. For building height, we recommend a maximum of 25 feet, which basically allows two-story development. For building footprint, House Bill 2001 itself actually specifies that each unit must be limited to 900 square feet or less. The administrative rules do authorize some additional flexibility to allow 200 feet of attached garage space to be kind of in addition to that 900 square feet. And we are recommending that the city choose that option to allow that additional flexibility.
Well, it's 1,100 foot footprint.
Yes. And then in addition to that, the maximum floor area, the proposed standard is 1,400 total square feet. So that would essentially allow one and a half stories, if they're kind of maxing out that building footprint option.
So that would, that did not really have the full two-story type of cottage, because we've heard that that's really not, we're trying to push for these smaller, single-story type, maybe story and a half, not the full.
So it looks like a cottage.
Yeah. Is there, is there any restriction on the 200 square foot allowance for a garage? Does it have to be a garage, or is this going to be in name only and turn into a four-season, four-season living area?
I think we, we'll talk about that, I think, more next month, some of the parking space standards and garage standards. But my understanding is, yeah, I mean, it has to be a garage. I mean, that's not to say that you couldn't fill it with your stuff, which a lot of people do with their garages. But yes, it's not habitable floor area. And then for setbacks, just because this is multiple buildings on the same lot, there's a building separation standard of six feet, which is generally consistent with the building code. And then all the perimeter setbacks are just subject to the base zone setback standards. For cottage orientation, generally, units are required to face a courtyard or be connected to the courtyard by a pedestrian path. For the common courtyard itself, the minimum area is 150 square feet per unit, and that's in one sort of consolidated piece. And it must have cottages on either side of the courtyard. The pedestrian access standards require paths connecting all of the cottage entrances, connecting those to all the common spaces and to the street. And then also, there's an allowance for one community building for each cluster. And community buildings would be subject to the same floor area maximum that would apply to cottages. The only difference is that they're not subject to that maximum footprint. So the full 1,400 square feet could all be on a single level. And then for parking design, the standards generally encourage shared parking areas, but they do also allow individual parking spaces, driveway spaces, or garages. And the standards for the clustered or shared parking areas are generally intended to limit the sort of visual impacts of a larger parking area. And they require things like grouping of spaces and required landscaping in between those groupings. And there are also minimum setbacks from all parking area or parking spaces, screening requirements, limits on garage door widths, and the size of detached garages, all kind of intended to sort of limit the visual impacts of parking areas.
Who's responsible for taking care of the, the additional building you mentioned? Who, who maintains it?
It would depend on what the ownership scheme is. If these are condominiums, I think there would be some kind of legal shared ownership of the space. If they're rental units, then it's, you know, whoever the property owner is would own and manage the space. And then if the lots were, or if the cottages were subdivided to be kind of a subdivision development, then there would be some kind of homeowners association that would have kind of joint ownership and shared management of that. Okay, and then lastly, we have our cluster housing, so two-unit, three-unit, and four-unit cluster housing. And as I mentioned earlier, we were recommending kind of a hybrid of the triplex and quadplex standards and some of the cottage cluster standards. So entry orientation, windows and garage, garage and parking area width, all the same as the triplex and quadplex standards. And then we're recommending applying the building separation and pedestrian access standards borrowed from the cottage cluster standards. And then we also have one additional standard for architectural consistency. And this is similar to that general standard that would apply to single-family and other middle housing types. But instead of applying to just the building, it would require consistent architectural style for all buildings within a single cluster.
I thought that we were defining clusters as a minimum of four units.
So these, it's a little confusing, but these are, these are essentially the detached versions of duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes. So these are not cottage clusters. These are cluster housing, which is a separate housing type. Okay. So I guess maybe I'll pause again there before we get into Frog Pond and see there are other questions or comments about the rest of these standards.
Maybe do a time check again as well.
I'm going to have to leave soon.
We have eight, almost quarter to nine.
Yeah, I'm going to have to, I'm so sorry.
Very well. Right away, Commissioner Gallagher, or do you have a few minutes?
I, I have a little bit of an emergency here with a puppy. I'm going to, thank you.
All right. What about the rest of the commission?
I'm okay.
Okay.
How much longer, Kate, do we have?
I think, what, we can get Frog Pond maybe 15, 20 minutes, Kate, what do you think?
Oh, definitely, yeah.
Just power, just power through.
I think I could maybe skip over a couple of details.
Well, it depends on how many questions we have, everybody's been quiet.
Okay. Real quick, um, sorry, I hate to do this.
There we go.
What's the driver for 150 square feet of courtyard for the cottage clusters?
You know, I mean, that's directly from the model code. So basically, the city can't require more than that without going into that alternative design standard that you have to justify. It's a pretty, it's a pretty limited standard compared to sort of existing cottage cluster standard or codes out there already. But, you know, the intent from the state's perspective was to be more flexible and to not require such a large portion of a site to be covered by, like, lawn space, for example.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay, I'm all right with that, thank you.
Can't require it, but it can certainly allow it.
Of course, yeah. Okay, sounds like I'm moving ahead to Frog Pond. So I think we can cover this pretty quickly. So we haven't, you hadn't seen the Frog Pond zone changes before this most recent packet. So, but we've been talking about Frog Pond quite a bit in the RN zone. So basically, for permitted uses for initial development in Frog Pond West, direction from the planning commission has been to allow a limited set of middle housing, but not sort of the full suite of middle housing. So we're good with duplexes, two-unit townhouses, and two-unit cluster housing. So that's like the sort of two units, two detached units on one lot, on any lot. But then on corner lots, also allowing triplexes, three-unit townhouses, or three-unit cluster housing. And then all other middle housing types, so quadplexes, four-unit cluster housing. Townhouses with four or more units and cottage clusters wouldn't be permitted during that initial development phase, but then they would be allowed as future infill development or redevelopment.
They clarified that the cluster, the cottage clusters are currently defined in the Frog Pond code would still be allowed.
Right, which are not the same as the HP 2001 cottage clusters.
These are, these are units with larger footprints, that's the main difference, is that right?
Yeah, and they have specific, they're individual lots under the Frog Pond definition. So essentially, they're smaller lots, single-family, gathered around a courtyard, rather than cottage clusters as defined by the state.
Right. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Great. Okay, so to sort of give an overview of how we've codified the sort of housing, additional housing allowances for middle housing and density, and the middle housing requirements. So direction was to, you know, allow some of those additional middle housing types. Some of those cannot count towards maximum densities, the duplexes can't count towards density. So kind of trying to factor that in, but also trying to keep the math as simple as possible and minimize changes to the current code. Our approach is to keep the existing table that regulates minimum and maximum dwelling units per sub-district, but instead to regulate lots instead of units. So this way, middle housing could exceed the current density limits, because the table is sort of agnostic as to how many units are on each lot. So it could be one, single-family unit, could be a duplex or a triplex if it's a quarter, or if it's a corner lot. And each of those duplex or triplex lots would essentially count, they would count as a single lot. So sort of allowing that increase in units while not really changing the table. And then for townhouses, it's just a little more complicated, because each of those units is on its own lot. So for that purpose, each of those townhouse developments would count as one lot. So a two-unit townhouse development would be equivalent to a duplex for the purpose of the calculation. And then for the middle housing requirement, the way that would work is that the 10% is calculated based on the maximum permitted lots. And so the 10% of the maximum number of lots is how many middle housing units must be provided. So to give an example, if a development is permitted to have 64 lots, based on how big it is and where it's located, 64 lots, at least seven middle housing units must be provided, because it's rounding up to the next unit. So again, the intent there is to kind of keep the math simple, but have that requirement work. And again, those housing units could be provided as any of the middle housing types that are permitted during the initial development phase of Frog Pond West. So for development standards, we really talked about this a lot at the last work session, and that the changes that are needed in the RN zone are pretty consistent with the changes that are needed in the rest of the zones. Some of the standards just need to be kind of updated to comply with the minimum administrative rules for middle housing. I'm not going to get into all these details. And then for design standards, we're not proposing to change most of these standards. We would like to keep them for a single-family and also apply them to middle housing. There are a couple tweaks that are needed just for compliance with, with the rules and just for kind of updating in terms of consistency. But this is the list of standards, and that will continue to apply. And then in addition, we're proposing just one new standard that we'd like some input on. And this standard would limit the height of main entrances to four feet above grade. And so this means that a main entrance couldn't be on the second floor above kind of a garage, as is shown in that upper image. And that's kind of a common style seen particularly in more urban-style townhouse developments. And for Frog Pond, the feedback that we've gotten so far is that you want to really kind of maintain that, the less urban, the more, I guess, suburban look and feel in the Frog Pond West neighborhood. So I think this is one way of kind of getting at that without being too overly restrictive. So I think that's our last slide. We do, well, we do have one more slide for the Frog Pond West master plan. And really, the changes to the master plan are pretty limited. They're mostly for consistency with the changes that are needed in the RN zone. And just to add some summary reflecting the recent, you know, regulatory changes and the recent policy guidance changes from the Equitable Housing, Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. And, you know, updating language to be a little more inclusive, so kind of getting rid of the term "single-family" to describe the sub-districts, since, you know, many other housing types will now be permitted in these areas. Okay, that's it, so I'll open it up now.
I'll go first. I think that it's ready for a wrap.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes, but I thought I heard somebody else, so I'm going to wait, because I've talked a lot already.
Jerry chimed in a short kind of.
Commissioner Woods, was that you trying to say something?
Yeah, I was going to say that, you know, I don't have any additional comments to what has been shown. And actually, I really support what the minor changes that you're making or proposing to do. So I'm okay with what you have just shown. And, you know, I don't, I don't have anything else additional to add, that's all I want to say.
Okay. Rodney, you want to go next?
Oh, sure, can you go back two slides, please, Kate? So the question I had is whether four feet above grade was too restrictive. And I'm trying to think about the, some of the development that I'm seeing across the street in Frog Pond for some of the single-level homes that are up higher graded than that. But I 100% agree, but I don't like the idea of the top. I'm just not sure if four feet is, is enough to still provide the development flexibility for the given lots and given topography of what the development might be.
I think save that for an exception to be made, to be made by either administratively or by DRB in a particular case.
And maybe we need to clarify what grade is, right? It's not necessarily from the sidewalk, but if you have like a graded lot that then has a retaining wall at the sidewalk, is it from the top of that retaining wall? We may need to clarify some of that.
Yeah, that's up a yard.
I think we specify it in the code, I'll have to look back, but it's, it's something like the average grade as measured along the foundation, so it's not, yeah, it's, if the house is kind of raised up above the sidewalk level, it's, it's where that foundation starts.
Okay, then I think four feet would be okay.
Great.
So does, does this allow a similar kind of design as the top picture here, but going down in the driveway to a basement kind of garage situation?
It's a good question.
Only if the basement is largely below grade.
Yeah.
That is, if the driveway entrances, you go down to it.
Yes, you do, or at least go down five feet.
Yeah.
So that in addition to your four feet, you have a good feeling for your garage. I mean, that is a design that in some urban areas you see.
I think it would allow that, yeah.
I think the nature of basement not being popular here and also the, the natural topography of the area this is being applied to, that's pretty unlikely. Okay.
Right.
Anybody else? I'm not seeing any additional, Commissioner Tuzinski doesn't have any comments? You were off my, my gallery view.
No additional comments, I, I like the design standard of not having the, you know, entrance way over the garage like that, I think it looks a lot better. That's about it.
Thank you. Actually, this turned out to be a set of reasonable kinds of standards that allow the kind of meeting the intent of the, our own equitable housing plan as well as the state's intent, without, you know, being really off the, off the top. So this is actually turning out to be very, very, very good. I'm, I'm happy with the outcome thus far. Well, we appreciate the feedback, and I, I do think we've kind of seen all this discussion coming to, you know, gel into these standards, and I appreciate the feedback and, uh, we'll, we'll move forward.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for, for your presentation. Is there anything else that staff wants to bring up? Because that's the end of what the agenda says we were needing to do tonight.
Yes, Chairman, if I may, just very briefly.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just very briefly, I wanted to share with the rest of the commission an upcoming event that the city is participating in. There will be a commemoration of Juneteenth, this will be the first time that we will be celebrating that occasion. There will be a public celebration taking place on Saturday, June 19th at 10:00 a.m. in Town Center Park, and I just wanted to share that with the commission so that you all were aware of the event and could put it on your calendar. And to also let you know that your fellow commissioner, Commissioner Woods, will be participating in part of that event taking place that day, so I don't know if he'd like to say a few words?
Yeah, I will, thank you, Miranda. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with the Juneteenth celebration, it's an old celebration that African-Americans celebrate. It's, it, it, it recognizes the actual, if you will, end of slavery, even though the January, or excuse me, the June 19th, 1865 date, it's two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation of January 1, 1863. But it's an important date and in light of a lot of the things that have happened last year, it's really been put in the forefront. So my only comment to my fellow commissioners is I hope that you will take some time out this Saturday to attend this first, to be annual event and support what we're doing. It won't be a long one, I don't believe, because this is the first year and we're really trying to get this going, but it would be great to see all of you attend on Saturday, the 19th. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you. Very good. In that case, we are ready for adjournment? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned at 9:00, 9:00 p.m., which is much earlier than we were warned indeed may be. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.
Yes, thank you all. Good night.